Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Board members may attend and participate in board meetings by electronic means in accordance with BVSD policy, BMEA, and state law. Laura, can you please call the roll?
Chavez?
Here.
Medler?
Here.
Niznik?
Here.
Quinlan Awedah?
Here.
Raj Paul?
Here.
Sargent?
Here.
Unger?
Here.
Thank you.
Beth, would you please read our land acknowledgement for us this morning?
With pleasure.
Is this working?
Yeah. Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Pleboman, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land, who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students so we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous people and recognize their responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
Thank you, Beth. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, is there a motion to approve this morning's agenda? Moved by Beth, seconded by Alex. Laura, can you call the roll?
Chavez?
Yes.
Medler?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Quinlan Awedah?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Unger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board members, now we will begin our only topic for this morning, which is prioritization and planning. Today, we are working with, as usual, Heather Bergman from Peak Facilitation to prioritize agenda items to review this coming spring. With that, I will hand it over to Dr. Anderson.
Good morning, everyone. Good to see you all. It is that time of year for our prioritization. I think that today is going to be pretty productive. This is the second go-around for our board on prioritization. I think that the last time we went through this, learned some things, and so made a few adjustments to the process to help clarify what it is that we're going to be doing. Heather is joining us today. Heather, thanks for being here and for helping us with this process as always. And we'd love to start with a bit of a icebreaker board check-in, so I'm going to turn the mic over to Heather.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. I am excited to be here, and I would love to check in with each of you and have you tell me two things. Thing one is sort of, I don't know, I don't know which one's the easy one, but thing one is generally how you're feeling about the work of the board. We haven't been together in a while. I'd just like to hear, like, feeling pretty good, anything you're feeling bumpy about. But the one that's the most fun for me is I would like to hear what is the very unique part of your family's Thanksgiving tradition? Uh-huh, yeah. Don't tell me you eat turkey, because that ain't unique. So it might go a little bit something like this. Hi, my name's Heather. I assume that you're all doing amazing because you do amazing things. And my mother is from Kansas, and every year at Thanksgiving, we eat a thing called 24-Hour Salad, which is shockingly delicious, even though you're going to laugh what's in it. It is whipped cream, canned cherries, canned pineapple, egg yolks, and pecans, which, because of the name, you do have to make it 24 hours in advance, and then it sets into this Jell-O-like thing. And it is such an important part of my family's tradition that one year, my brother and sister-in-law hosted and did not assign it to anyone, and my mother stomped out. Yes. So there you go. Who would like to top that, because I know you can? Any, meanie, mighty? Can I get a mow-up in here? Really?
Okay, fine. Now, all I can think about is food. I don't think we have any crazy Thanksgiving traditions, though Thanksgiving in our household is always celebrated with the Indian half of my family, and so all of our Thanksgiving dishes have an Indian twist. So ginger curry, all the things will be in marinades and rubs and twist, twist on the traditional fare. That's our kind of tradition, and we always go to the Buffs game that's on that weekend as well, because we have tickets. Feeling about the work of the board? I'm feeling pretty positive. I'm feeling like some of our pace is not the same as we've done in the past, and some of the community engagement isn't like we've done in the past. That makes me feel a little bit nervous about any potential recourse for that, but otherwise, I'm feeling pretty good about the work of the board.
And when you say the pace is slower than you're accustomed to?
We've never done a mid-year implementation of anything. It's a little bit quicker turnaround in some of the stuff. So I'm just, it's out of the ordinary, and I'm digesting all of that.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Kitty?
I'll go next. So the only unique thing I can think about, and it's obviously not unique, because there are a lot of people in the country who share this, but my family has been at every single Thanksgiving ever celebrated.
That's amazing.
Which my daughters are not happy about because of the horrible things that the colonizers did.
Fair.
But I don't think we can be held responsible for things our ancestors did. So that's somewhat unique. And how am I feeling about the work of the board? Well, I feel better than I did a bunch of months ago, but I feel like we are bogged down with micromanagement. And it's getting in the way of doing the work of the board. And having been on the board for seven years and seen with different people, not every, you know, we've had turnover, but how highly functioning the board has been since I've been on it, it's a bit of a disappointment.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, hit me.
Thanksgiving, I'm not sure, let's try to come up with something interesting. The only thing is, like, my family, my wife's family is from Chicago, South Siders, and they like cranberries, but it has to be out of the can. It has to have the ridges. And God forbid you bring real cranberry stuff. That doesn't happen. So unless it has the ridges, it's not Thanksgiving. And we have to run out and get it if it's not there.
That's hilarious.
So that's what my kids know now. They're like, yes, we need the ridges.
That's how you pay it forward.
They call it the good stuff. So we're going to have the good stuff this year. So that's nice. In terms of the board, you know, I'm new. We're almost one year in. It's our anniversary, I guess, right? And I'm feeling positive. I feel like we're kind of getting our legs underneath us. We're figuring it out and learning. I think we're moving in the right directions and figuring things out.
Fantastic, thanks. Yep, Beth?
Similar to Jorge, I feel like I don't have anything super unique or fun to share about Thanksgiving, but we lived in Seattle for 10 years, and so most of my family's here in Colorado. So Thanksgiving for me became very much a Friendsgiving holiday, which I really love. I'm a big believer in sort of like the family that you have, but also the family that you choose. I put a lot of priority into those folks, and I love that they seem to reciprocate that. So for me, Thanksgiving is often a holiday that I don't necessarily spend in Colorado with friends, with family. I spend it with friends. And that, you know, that's morphed over the years of what we do during those holidays, but it's a good time to reflect upon just gratitude for the people near and far in my life. Work of the board, I feel like if we were plotting this on a spectrum of what Nicole and Kitty shared on kind of one end, and maybe Jorge on the other end, I'm in the middle, but maybe leaning slightly towards the Nicole-Kitty side, in that I think overall, I think the things that I love about what we've done, I think this board's awesome. I love sharing this with my colleagues. I think that some of the kind of structural changes we've made are really positive. As you know, I love meeting during the day versus nighttime. Thank you so much for accommodating that. This go-around really means a lot to me. And I think that some of our opportunities to have greater dialogue, I really support. So I'm really positive with all of that. I do think we are still trying to find our footing when it comes to not getting too in the weeds because of the increased dialogue. So it's sort of a good problem to have, right? I see it as a result of a positive change that we're still trying to calibrate. We're not quite sure. We have lots of dialogue. We're having lots of exchange, wonderful, but that's getting us maybe slipping in a little bit into the weeds from time, from time to time. That's it. And I like your earrings, Kitty.
Thank you. I'm wearing them constantly. It's comma love.
Awesome. Hit me.
Alex Medler. Oh, sorry. That's all right, I know who you are.
And I remember.
My family has two sort of cultural traditions, one's older but newer to our family, and one's pretty old. We come from Irish immigrants. It's the celebrated culture of our family, so there is always an oyster dressing, which, by the way, is because Christmas was the one day the Irish were allowed to harvest on the beach, because the British wouldn't let them harvest on their own places. So the oyster, the oyster Christmas or Thanksgiving celebration is an act of rebellion against the oppressors, which we still celebrate in our family.
Take that, Great Britain.
Yes. The other part, my aunt and uncle ran the Philadelphia Har Krishna Temple for a long time. So when we lived on East Coast, we'd have all the East Coast family, and so we'd have a vegetarian Krishna Thanksgiving, which we've translated into generally trying to have a homemade curd, curry that's roasted with the turkey, in terms of Thanksgiving traditions, even though we don't have our Krishna relatives at the table. In terms of the board, it won't be a surprise. I'm a little further to the Jorge side, Jorge side of Beth's agenda. As someone outside this board, I've been, I came here as a change agent. I'm interested in change, and I think there's a deep culture in the district from the 20 to 10 years ago part that was reluctant. So I make no bones about trying to be a change agent and pushing it to go in that direction. Totally love that we have these meetings, that the deep dives into data, that we're having less formalized dialogue with leadership and staff about key issues before the community. I think that's a plus. I think that makes things uncomfortable for people. I own that. But I'm also delighted to figure out how to iterate and tweak along the way, so I recognize the discomfort and the challenge that comes with change. And I'm always up for the feedback about how to have that not be micromanaging, but to have that be responsible governance. And I believe that there's an engagement you can have by having people talk about something for 15 months and then have it come back to us, and we don't change anything. I think the calendar issue illustrates the importance of us having deep conversations upfront, telling people what our principles are, and then being straight with the community about what we intend to do, so that their engagement is not performative or that our decision-making is not performative. So I'm all in favor of making people comfortable, honoring all the people on the board, honoring the public, honoring the staff, but I'll continue to push for change, and I'm excited about where we're getting to and delighted, as you say, to have the feedback and iterate.
Thanks.
I'm not so much of a change agent as Alex, but I share his views on things. I think, you know, I really, I really enjoy working with this group. I loved getting to know especially the folks that, those of us that were elected last fall, and I do miss some of the personal connection that we're not able to have as much. But I like that we've kind of charted our own path and are not kind of held back by the way things have been done or those kinds of things, and so I appreciate that. And I also think we've been productive, and so that reflects that. I said, I think we've been very productive. I think not just--
I thought you said we've been corrupted.
I hope not, I hope not, I hope not. So, and I think, you know, not just the number of policies we've gone through, but I think, you know, we're generally aligned on big issues. We kind of make, you know, we've worked well on things. Not that it's a sign of not a functioning board, but I think when there's disagreement, it's been respectful and minimal, and so I think that's a sign of kind of cohesion and alignment. So I've been really pleased with being on the board, and obviously, you know, as those of us that are new, kind of still figuring out how best to make progress and kind of exactly our role and how we should use that role. In terms of Thanksgiving traditions, Jorge had thought about this. We, for years, my uncle insists on making homemade cranberry sauce, and would like peel all the individual cran--
Peel them?
Yeah, just like it would spend, it would be days and days, and, you know, all this hype for this cranberry sauce. And it was very good, but then one year, he, I don't remember, he wasn't there or something, and so someone just got the canned stuff, and we never went back. So it was, nobody could tell the difference. Anyway, he was very upset about that, but, yeah, I guess as far as family tradition, we have, I've always loved Thanksgiving. It's always been one of my favorite holidays growing up. We had a big family. We used to gather. We had built a table just so we could all have this great homemade cranberry sauce, among other good food. But since the pandemic, we actually have used this opportunity to travel with our extended family. Sometimes great trips, sometimes just, you know, somewhere close by, but we've had the grandparents with us, and that's been a really cool tradition. And not what I thought I'd want to do, you know, since I've always loved Thanksgiving, but it's been nice to, for our kids to spend time with grandparents on both sides and for both sides of the family to be together, so.
Thanks.
I'm Lalehna, and-- That was Jason. I don't know if he introduced himself. For Thanksgiving in my family, we have a pretty traditional, regular Thanksgiving, and then the weekend that comes after, we go Christmas tree hunting, as of, everybody in the whole family goes, and we take a few big trucks, and we always go far, far into the mountains and hike a long way and use chainsaws and cut down trees that are way bigger than we need to have, and then we take all the wood with us to use in the fireplace later and just use the top, and it's-- But that is something that my kids say is like so formative for them, and it's something that I've done every year of my life except for when I was pregnant with my oldest daughter. She was born on the 14th, and so the doctor was like, you cannot go Christmas tree hunting. This baby might come. So that's the only year I've ever missed of that. Even during the pandemic, we still did it. And in terms of work of the board, I definitely feel super grateful for my colleagues and staff. I feel like we are moving toward not only shared trust with our community, but just transparency because we, because it's a shared value. And I am always willing to dig in to any data or any issue, but I agree with Alex. I don't like it ever to be performative. I believe that our decisions don't need to be traditional. We can think outside the box and do what we believe to be right. So I've had a hard week since the election, as I'm sure many people here have, but I feel very hopeful about our community, extremely hopeful, and I really love my colleagues on the board. Thanks so much.
Are y'all cool if we invite staff at the table to join us? Because I want to know what everyone's Thanksgiving tradition is, because this is the most wonderfully, delightfully American conversation. I love everything about it. It's such a melting pot bunch. Laura?
I don't have anything-- Sorry. I think the biggest tradition that I have as an adult is I had a baby that was born on Thanksgiving, so we always, because her birthday is not always on Thanksgiving, it's kind of like you think about and have a little birthday celebration every year on Thanksgiving. So that's always kind of exciting. And I do remember that Thanksgiving, walking the dog and being in labor, and my husband was at work, and I was like, really? I can't believe, and it was snowing. I can't believe this is happening. So, yeah, that was our first Thanksgiving as a family of three at that point. As far as work with the board, I have really enjoyed the past year getting to know each of you and seeing us really start to work together as a team and become a cohesive unit, which I think is great for our productivity.
Well, let's see. So Thanksgiving's a little in flux for us with a kid at a European college that does not recognize Thanksgiving. The last two years have been a little weird, but I share a lot of what you take away from it. For me, Thanksgiving's been the friends. It's been the ability to really just celebrate in a way that makes sense for our family unit at the time, so I love that. I also absolutely love cooking when I know all the ingredients I'm going to use are in the house, and there's no more trips to the store. It's a very peaceful feeling, yeah. And this board's been amazing. I mean, I love policy, and so does this board, and that's been awesome. I think sometimes I'm a little nervous that I'm not keeping up because there's other stuff going on too, but otherwise, it's been a great year.
Rob?
So Thanksgiving, you know, we've moved around a bunch, I would say, over the, well, moved to Atlanta and then moved here, so don't have really much family here. Used to be, it was a very big family event. You all have met my wife, Jess, and she's got a huge Italian family, which is loud and fun and crowded, and so, but I will say the one tradition that has existed is that my wife makes the absolute best stuffing on the planet with Italian, with Italian sausage in it. Italian sausage. Did you hear that? Yeah, it's incredible. And so, does not matter where we are sometimes, since we've lived here, we've gone away for the week, we've stayed home. If that didn't hit the table, I think, yeah, I think that that would be an issue. You know, this, it has been wonderful getting to know everyone on this board. This will be the third board I've worked with in the past six and a half years, and I think all of our boards have had different strengths, have had different priorities. I would say the thing that I think that's been really great about this board and Nicole's leadership as chair is just a lot of clarity on expectation. I think that with the goals that we've set for myself, with the prioritization, with the conversation we've had, that there's been a lot of clarity for us to execute on the priorities of the board, which has been great. That, and we're coming off of like probably the best year this school district has ever had in regards to performance and progress, and we have a focused strategic plan. We've got, you know, really clear ways in which we talk about things and how we engage in them. And so I think that the adjustments and the clarity have been really helpful as we continue to strive for these big overarching goals. And pace is always going to be a thing that I think we talk about, and whether it's fast, whether it's slow, I think that just deciding what pace we want to move on collectively together helps provide the clarity for staff to be able to do a good job and for myself as superintendent to manage the collective bandwidth of our team in ways that deliver on the promises we make, which is really important to me, so.
Excellent. So thank you for indulging me. Always appreciate particularly coming out of an election, which was a little bit of a bumpy time, just a little bit of gratitude for the things that we still have, our friends, our family, and our canned cranberries. Super excited to spend some time with you today to talk about how we're going to proceed with prioritization, and Rob, you're going to set the stage for us a little bit.
Yes, I will. We always start, I think, these sessions for the past at least five years around just grounding in why we're here, the vision and mission of the school district. You know, we don't necessarily maybe look at this all the time, but I do believe it's ingrained in all of our beliefs as we move forward with work with the board. Challenging, meaningful, engaging opportunities so all children thrive and prepared for successful civically engaged lives, and really proud of the work that we've done to align to that. What are the things that we value? And then our long-term student outcomes, ignite, equip, soar. And when I think about the work we'll talk about today and the work and the things that we've achieved together as a team, and previous boards have worked to really strive to set the stage for where we are, that kids are benefiting from challenging and relevant educational opportunities, we're reducing disparities in achievement, and we're working really hard to make sure kids graduate with what they need to be successful after they leave us. So as we, here's how I propose we move forward. I've shared with you all a list. Now, when we did the prioritization last time, I think some of this stuff wasn't clear for folks, so we tried to create a little bit of more clarity of the topics we've already prioritized, the topics that are required by board policy, and then how do we rank the new prioritization topics. I will say, one of the prioritization topics is weaved into a topic previously prioritized, which would be kind of the data drives into the subgroups. That was, that was an item we prioritized, but that would be something we would do in these deep dives of data, which we have planned, and so everything else is ranked and prioritized. What I propose we do is I'll pull the board forward, and I will walk the board, the board through the board in front over here on where everything landed, why it landed there, and then also align that with the goals that you all have set for me in my evaluation, because that's critical. There's some things that I have to update you on and make sure that those things are aligned, and so you'll see that as well. I will say that there are some pressures that we need to consider. Some we understand, some we don't understand. I know that you all know that the long poll in the tent for us is making sure we implement the strategic plan to reduce disparities, increase opportunities for our students, and so that is always going to be there. I've shared with you all this, the budget that the governor has proposed, which if it stays pat in terms of averaging, would be another $4 to $5 million less than we already have, not including any increases of any new priorities or new investments. And so that will be something that not only are we going to have to deal with from a budgetary standpoint, but we're going to have to advocate for if there's opportunities to get our voice in the room. We'll have declining enrollment, and in February, you'll get your annual update. We also are going to be reviewing attendance boundaries this year, right? These are big, big topics. We have these MOUs with BBEA that in my goals, by May, I have to have those sorted out and shared with you all, and so I'll talk a little bit about when I'm going to do that. And then the other things that we've prioritized and how those, how those are, go from priority to potential action depending upon how the conversation goes and how we've engaged. And so just setting the stage, potentially heavy legislative session, we have a lot at stake in regards to budget, potential, oh, and cell phone policy, which is going to be a big change. It's going to be a big change. I think that one, we're up for the challenge, but, you know, these big things take a little bit of everybody's time. And so, you know, this isn't just one person that deals with the budget process. If we're thinking about having to reduce investments, then that's everybody's engagement on the team. If we're thinking about the ways, you know, big, big community topics like declining enrollment and boundary changes and things like that, that takes a lot of people's time. These MOUs, we have lots of different members on our team participating in those. So just to give you a sense of the bandwidth, how far stretched it is. That being said, I do think that I have a prioritization board that I'll share with you that gets at all the things that we've prioritized and in a way that we can manage. So as a reminder, this, for this prioritization, we put things into previously prioritized, required by current policy and new prioritization topics, and we'll use this, we'll work from this list as I walk through the board, so you can check off the things that we've covered or not covered, and you know where it is as we go through the course of the next few months. And then finally, this is a little bit harder to see, let's see if I can't-- And then finally, this is a little bit harder to see, let's see if I can zoom in, but this is the, yeah, I know, let's see, hold on. This is the results of the survey that you all filled out, and the prioritization topics on the third column are ranked in that order. So they're ranked, so I know you can't see it, but I think we're okay. So what I propose is, do I want to bring the board up front so you could see it? Do we want to? What's that? Okay. But, yes, if I bring it up, or if you could bring it up forward, then I will use that and I'll walk you through where I prioritize things. And then Heather, interject as needed, or if folks have questions, you can ask those as we go forward, and I'll show you how we've kind of pulled this together.
And on our handout, Rob, ranked top to bottom, gifted and talented at the top is the number one priority. Software does weight it, so the number of people that put it first, so those are all weighted responses.
And some of them were tied, so, but they're clumped in.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right.
Right? I always appreciate the reminder that my eyesight is actually quite terrible. Every time, I'm like, it's adorable that you think I can see that.
Invite anybody who wants to come up here. Like, we can cuddle around the border, we can stay on our seats whenever you want.
That's right. That's right.
All right, very good.
Right. He's not riding big fat race for Rob on any of them.
And now, everyone, I feel like a game show host a little bit, welcome to prioritize your board priorities. Okay, so a couple of things to note before we get into January. This prioritization starts January 14th. We have a few months, a few, two meetings, and then Casby prior to that. Here's what's happening on the 19th. We're going to do, we have to bring back graduation requirements, IKF. That's coming back here as information and then also study. An election update is something that we'll probably do within either superintendent's comments, just kind of, just give an update on things and how they potentially might impact us. We're having dinner at the Culinary Center. And then for action is your district's board director, district review. Calendar is coming back for action on the 19th. And then cellphone policy is coming back for action on the 19th. So, busy day. Yep. So, blue is executive session. So we don't necessarily plan those out in advance, those are kind of ad hoc as needed. Special events are things like dinner at the Culinary Center, superintendent's honor roll, breakfast with legislators. So anything that we want to schedule that doesn't fit within a traditional would be in this special event. Work sessions are green, day sessions are yellow, information items are orange, action is red, study is yellow, and then board policies we'll talk a little bit about because that's not built out on purpose. So that's November 19th, then we're going to be at Casby from December 5th through the 7th. We talked about potentially having some time during that time to go through maybe some policies, some catch-up policy maybe, but I don't know that we've solidified that. And then on December 10th, we have the audit, superintendent's honor roll, audit, enrollment update, budget development process, grad requirements coming for action. And the 17th is something I want to talk to you all about. We had previously reserved that for another deep dive, and I think that we may want to repurpose this time to do some policy work, because we have a deep dive in February that's going to have more relevant data. We could give you a deep dive, but to the extent that it kind of aligns with some of the rhythm of the way data's coming in, the team was kind of thinking it might be better just to wait till February and do that in February and April, and that three per semester might be too much. But I would open up conversation on that if you'd be open to spending that daytime session on doing some policy catch-up.
Beth?
I mean, I'm open to it. Just tell us a little bit more about the policies that are kind of on your mind.
The ones we haven't gotten to.
Could you be less vague?
No.
Give us which ones specifically are.
I mean, I wouldn't want to sit down with Kathleen. Her and I haven't really talked about that. We do feel like that because of some of the things that have happened, we'd like to do a little bit of catch-up on some, just using that for policy work. I've been doing some work around organizing policy, and on the 21st, I'll have our new plan on how we're going to meet our superintendent's goal of making sure all policies get touched on a seven-year cycle. We're in the midst of still developing that. But we could either cancel it, or we could use it for policy, or we could begin to maybe have a truncated version of what we've been doing on any relevant data. We can give you updates on how some of the work is progressing. I think it would be better if we waited till February, but we'd be happy to kind of go with what the board would like.
Nicole, and then Alex.
I'm trying to squint and read. One thing, before the end of the year, we have to also talk about Grove-Bowls Swan, do we not? And would that be an opportunity on the 17th?
Grove-Bowls Swan is the input sessions on the 21st, and then the action is on the What's on the 14th here?
We have two community input hearings, so we've got two board meetings. Where will we do enough? I've got it on the 14th.
Make sure we put that on there.
And as he's writing, is that going to give the board enough time to have a week? Is that, do we think that's going to, if we're seeing it on the 14th and then approving it on the 21st, is that?
You'll have items before the 14th to work in.
So, let's make sure I'm looking at the right list here, but I believe that all the reports related to Bowls Swan will be in, we'll have those in December. So the board will have those reports finalized by December 16th, no, by December 20th. That's the date set in the run-of-show to make sure you've got the DAC report, the staff committee report, any response by the charter school. CACSA will have completed the interview, so we'll have all that information for the board about three weeks before.
That's great. And I just want to make sure, because this board has not done one of these before we carve out enough time with that, and I'm in thinking through the other ones as well, because I do anticipate it taking some time with the board.
Alex?
I'm interested in protecting the time for dialogue around the data, and I think there's things to talk about, but I also understand the time that Nick takes for the charter application, certainly, and I know that our policy agenda remains ambitious and high-paced to get through everything in seven years, which is not something I'm pushing by speed, by the way. But I do, and I am intrigued by using the time, like when I think about data and understanding what's going on, I do think about the formative and qualitative data that we have. And so I'm very much interested in asking and hearing from people, and I don't know how we assemble this or incorporate it, but hearing from people about how major things are going. And so, like when we have our mental health stuff, I'd love to hear from the people in the mental health centers in exchange with them about like, what's the adult and student experience on things? So I think, I guess I would think a little more expansively about data, not just about what comes in a spreadsheet from CDE, but what we know about what's going on and how things are going. So I'd make the case to still protecting that, while I also, of course, defer to your judgment about what we need to do in terms of the policy discussions and what we need to do in terms of Bowls Swan. Because I, in addition just to the regular things that would go on with any charter application, I think the Bowls Swan population and location raises really pretty tricky policy issues, and I'm not sure whether those are board discussions or something our finance and special ed people need to talk about, but there's definitely some tricky stuff there that will take time.
Any other board members have thoughts or preferences around use of this particular day for data? Yep, Kitty?
Well, I support digging into policy, because we have so much to do, and setting policy is one of the jobs of the school board. So it's one of our main things that we do, so. And it would be really good not to be behind on it, because I mean, we started on this ambitious goal of every, you know, making sure everything is reviewed at least once every five years, but we were starting out with policies that were enacted before some people on the board were even born. Not before I was born, because the district didn't exist before I was born. But, yeah, so I'm in favor of that.
Anyone else? So, Rob, do we have an option of protecting that day for policy, moving that data dive to the subsequent one in February, but then also trying to incorporate maybe some of Alex's ideas about hearing some additional voices as part of that data conversation later?
If the board's okay, here's what I'd love to do. I'd love to sit back down with our team and do maybe a hybrid, a little bit of data, kind of a data check-in on what's relevant, what data is coming forward, and then some time for policy, if everybody's okay with that. I still have to sit down with Kathleen, I still have to sit down with the team. I just think the team was getting nervous that they didn't have three hours of data maybe to dig into. And so, but, you know, to Alex's point, to the extent that we can, you know, as opposed to having quantitative data updates, if there's some, here's how some things are going, here's what we're seeing is working, here's where some of the challenges might be, I think that we could most likely facilitate that, and so we've reserved the 17th for that.
Cool.
If everybody's good with that? I'm good with that? Okay. All right. So now, let's go to January 14th. Attendance policy, boundary policy, JC. So if you're on your bingo card here, that would be under topics required by board policy and also topics previously prioritized. So attendance boundary, we'll be doing that. We'll be doing the draft strategic financial plan, which is part of our budget process, which really shows how our budget's aligning with our strategy, and so that's an important aspect. As part of board policy, a bond update, CBOC bond update. Now, the board has a choice here. We can do this bond update as a public update to, as an information item, or we can post it as an executive summary. There'll be more bond update stuff when we come down here in May, as we have new projects finishing up. And Rob Price shared with me, he could do that as an executive summary if we wanted to scrape back some of that time for, from that meeting. And so that would be a decision up to the board.
Lenya's got a thought? Go ahead. Which, please?
Executive summary.
Executive summary preference? Anyone troubled by that? Great, executive summary it is.
So thumbs up sideways, thumbs down is the way that we're communicating. Is that okay, Heather?
Yep.
All right, look at that. We're taking things off, okay. We're going to put that down there, and Laura, make a note for that, please, for Cabinet, that we'll talk to Rob about that. Okay. So we also have the Grove Elementary School presentation to the board as part of the process, right? And so that, they will be able to present to the board on the 14th? Is that correct, Kathleen? I pulled that from the run-of-show, so it should be correct, okay. And then we have to study the revised 24, 25 budget. And just as a reminder, the revised budget is, we analyze the end-of-year books, how much more did we spend, or less did we spend, how much more came in or less that came in, and if there's any adjustments that we've had to make for this school year based on those, we'll present those to you, study, and then action on the 21st. And so that is January 14th. January 24th, and, oh, at the beginning, charter public input session one, 22nd or 21st is charter public input session two, which is, those are just reserved board comment time for folks to come to talk about the application, right? And so it's designated time.
Rob? Hold on, questions, Nicole and then Jason?
So during our board meeting earlier this year, since that application was first submitted, I had noticed that there were several people providing public comment on behalf of people that did not live within the bounds of our district policy says you have to live within the boundaries or have a student that attends. And I'm wondering with this space as well, how we're thinking through that. It didn't feel, it felt like taking advantage of a loophole in a way that did not feel great to me. And they were publicly saying, I'm speaking on behalf of XYZ. How can we handle that, or might we be able to handle that differently during those two chunks of time? The location of that and the level of interest is a high degree from outside of our borders, and I just want to be mindful of the board's time and the intent of that policy and, you know, aligned to the process that we're mandated to follow. I just did not feel great during the last public comment section on that review.
I think it's tricky, right? So Laura, when we're, when she, when people are pre-signed, our process is you have to sign up previously. Laura monitors that, ensures that they live within our district, does not allow them to speak if they don't, but she can anticipate what their comments will be, right? So at the end of the day, what we could potentially do, if it falls without, falls outside of our, kind of our policy or the spirit of our policy, we could always interrupt a speaker and tell them that they can't say anything on behalf of anybody but themselves, to the extent that we'd want to do that. If you start doing that, then people will just be, I would imagine, would just say, well, this is on my, this is my belief. So I hear what you're saying, I just don't know how we could potentially navigate that and manage that other than we could set the expectation that, you know, if you're only speaking upon yourself and not somebody else, I don't know.
Okay, on this same topic, we have Nicole again, and then Alex, and then Kitty, and then Jason still waiting.
So then a follow-up, I guess, do we have a time limit, like a carve-out? On our normal public comment, we say, after an hour, everybody goes to the end of the meeting. Do we have a hard stop on time for public comment on this, similarly to all other public comments? So if public comment on that day takes longer than an hour, it automatically kicks the end? Or would it be because it's special for that topic, no matter how much public comment, people, no matter how many minutes people sign up for, we have to allow it all to occur?
So, I think the board is fine if you follow your same public comment policy. That's how we proceed with any other required sort of community hearing or input, which we've had before, like on the Columbine Improvement Plan. I would say this, I mean, you also have the option of saying, these board meetings are going to serve as our hearing on this charter application, and we want to hear from people who are impacted. We know it's on the border. You could just waive your policy and let people who want to speak to the application If we were concerned about that piece, I do think we've taken pretty careful efforts to make sure that we are giving this application the fullest consideration, sort of the broadest protection of the process in order to protect the board's decision. So that would be my consideration. I guess if we were going to waive it, we'd still want to make sure, we will permit, the board will hear from non-residents or people as long as you've got a direct, I mean, we don't want to get charter advocates from coast to coast, so we'd have to find a way to carve that out if we were going to entertain it.
Thanks, Kathleen. Alex?
My, I would add to Kathleen's caution that I think the conduct of the process is evidence in an appeal. And so, anything we do that appears to go against hearing from people about, who are in supportive of the application, is counterproductive if we say no, or if we have conditions about it. And I do believe it's three blocks. It's proposed to be three blocks from the border, and there's a ton of open enrollment. I think there are open enrollment issues that come up with the special population, crossing district boundaries, and all sorts of stuff to deal with. That's why I think it'll take time, and there's policy questions. But the other thing for me is, at some point, to be clear in our feedback and in our own, like I would love, and maybe this is an executive session thing, or maybe, but I think the board would be well briefed about how charter applications happen and what it...
it, what leads to the appeals, and how they can, our own conduct can contribute to that. And I think also, the applicant would really benefit from knowing that nothing in a charter application is based on how many people are too angry or participating in the public hearing. So the, the most important thing, in terms of the numbers, are the number of people who've committed to enroll in a school if it opens. And if anybody else is up there speaking about why they like a charter school, it's like, it's neither here nor there. Like, we need to know what the applicants are proposing to do, the capacity they have, and the families that are committed to enrolling in them. And if another hundred people or 500 people testify for or against, same thing if we had a, organized, we could have a pressure campaign from opponents, and have 80 people sign up to testify against the charter application. Not a grounds to not approve it. Counterproductive if we cited that in not approving it. So I think we need to communicate to the Ball-Swan folks and any other charter applicant how much the number of signs and testifying's we have is, is pretty much irrelevant to the consideration of the application. So they can norm their expectations on whether or not a pressure campaign, one or the other, is relevant to the review.
Kitty?
So I, Alex, I like your idea of just letting the board, giving education about charter application approval and appeal, because most folks here have not been through that yet. What was I gonna say? You asked, no. Oh, yes, about people who don't live in the district.
Right.
So...
I think one thing we could possibly do is make sure when they sign up, and this is something that maybe Laura could just add to the information that's online already, is that we will only hear from people who reside within our boundaries, because those are the people we are responsible to. We're not responsible to people who live in other school districts, we're welcoming to them to attend our schools, but we answer to our own electorate. And given that this could be quite lengthy, I think that, I mean, that's my suggestion.
I'm not really in favor of making allowances for people who don't live in the district to testify, because again, that's just gonna add more to it. And to Alex's point, regardless of how many people are for it or not for it, we're gonna make our decision based on the application and our process for making such decisions.
Last thought on this, and then I'm gonna give Jason a chance to jump in.
Oh, there was one.
Finish your thought, Kitty, and then we'll go to Nicole.
And also, the, make it clear, you, you can't come and speak for somebody else.
Nicole?
So what I'm hearing is that we'll continue to follow our process and our policy, you cannot speak if you don't live within the boundaries of the, of the district, and we are not, we can continue to follow the policy where public comment exceeds one hour, everybody can be moved to the end, and following our current policy as written is probably the best way to, you know, make it so that we're not appearing to be in favor or opposed, or using the public comment as a process to sway the board, along with, you know, those that are communicating regularly with Ball-Swan. Kathleen, I'm looking at you, that a public campaign isn't going to sway the board, really, the contents of the application are what the board will be evaluating, not necessarily the speakers that show up.
One more comment, can you wait one more time? Still patient. Alex wants to jump in again, are you?
No, actually, my question...
Are you on this one?
You can skip me, it was a more a question of the, the process question, how this public comment is different from our standard one, and I think that's been answered.
Okay, oh, thank you, okay, great. Alex?
Uh, maybe this is a point of information, but, um, uh, I can just easily imagine times when we probably would be interested in someone from outside the district speaking to the board and allowing it, and I don't know what the circumstances are, you can do it, but I can imagine people in the community working with a community group that stretches the boundaries, and the executive director and the communications person from that organization lives outside our boundaries. So, uh, I'm not opposed, in general, to hearing from people who live outside the boundaries under special circumstances, based on expertise or commitment or connection to something that we're doing. There's tons of people who know issues really well, who have experience working on them in another setting, who might come before our board at some point. So, um, I understand in this circumstance, if it's, there's a ton of that, that's not great. But we are affecting people outside the district, we do make rules that expose us to legal liability based on how we interact with the people that we bring into our district, we serve the people who come into our district, parent of one of our kids who's in a school, who's open enrolled, isn't allowed to testify before our board.
I think they are.
They are.
They can, 'cause they're attending, you have to attend their schools or live within our boundaries.
All right. Well, I, I don't know, intending to attend comes pretty darn close to me to being part of our community. So I'm not, I'm totally tangle-eyed with trying to be super hard-nosed about who lives in the district or not. I think some flexibility may be appropriate in different circumstances. Even though I'm, I totally understand sentiment on this one, and agree that it's problematic, I just think it's not black and white.
Beth, did you wanna jump in? Okay, go ahead, Kitty.
So I'm thinking that if there are such experts or folks who are, you know, working with the proposed charter school, and I'm thinking this for now and future, we can invite those people, can we not? Kathleen, we could invite people to come talk to us, or not?
The board has the discretion to invite presentations and to add presentations to its agenda.
Right, so that would be a way to address that, in, instead of just letting anybody sign up, and they may or may not live in our district, and we can get the information we need without violating the, you know, the policy about who tests, or who makes comments.
Okay. All right, so Nicole summarized the overall approach. Did you, do you have something to add just for that specific event?
So the question would be, does the board want an executive session on charter school process prior to getting the information on the 20th? So we could, well, uh, we could do it on the 17th. Also, there's the mid-year evaluation, so we'd already have an executive session, so why don't we do just, okay?
And then it sounds like also providing some feedback back to the applicant on, maybe we don't need to have a mob, 'cause mob not helping. Okay, fantastic.
It actually, I think, can be counterproductive sometimes because it gets really annoying.
No doubt. All right.
All right, so, all right, this is, this is exactly how this process is supposed to work, we improve it as we go along. So, um, on the 21st would be Charter Public Input Session 2. So now the 17th, we have a exec session, first public input session, then you're hearing from Grove, and then the 21st is when you would have to act on approving or, or not approving. The 28th is, so the 28th is the day that we have reserved for breakfast with legislators, and that is the, the date, and I'm looking at Laura, we've verified that with Heather and Tanya. And so, so on the run-of-show, that, this has to go on the 28th, because if that's, when's the, when's the last time we can do that?
So, uh, nine days from the completion date is the 28th.
Kathleen, will you turn your mic?
So because of the, the holidays and everything else, we actually prepped the timeline and signed up on it with Ball-Swan, and it looks like they signed up on Board Action on the 28th. I think they would be flexible, I'm not sure how that meeting got selected.
Nicole's got a thought also?
We've had our breakfast and then had a business meeting later in the evening, I, I mean, I wouldn't not, I would personally not be opposed to doing both if we need to get some business done, and I hate having over-packed agendas and feeling rushed, and so I would be, I'm putting out there to my fellow board members, that we have done both, we could continue to do both, as long as the space is available in the evening.
I see six thumbs up and one down. Alex, just wanna share your reasoning?
It depends on the timing. I'm on a plane to Maui on January 28th, and so there's about eight hours where I will not be available to join a vote, and I'd like to vote on this.
Is this something we can sort out on the fly, or do you need to sort of figure out what you're doing with that little breakfast fun there?
So, so here's what I'd propose, let's see what we can do. Like, if we've made some commitments, then, uh, let's see if, if we can't try to figure something out there.
Okay.
So, this...
TBD on that one?
So we're gonna, do that there.
Lania?
This is more of a process question, not because Alex wants to give his proxy to someone, but can you give a proxy to someone for a vote? Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, no, under, under the state board voting law, you can, or school board voting law, you can...
And I, and I wasn't hopeful for that, I just wondered.
Just curious, yeah. Beth?
I mean, could Alex appear virtually to provide a vote, assuming that worked out with timing of his plane? I mean, does, does he physically have to be here to provide a vote? No, right?
No, board members can vote in virtual meetings, apologies.
Great. Kitty?
That's what I was gonna say.
Alex wants to jump in?
Oh, I know, a question. What if we are only six voting members, this is for Kathleen, and there's a tie?
The vote is to take action, so if it's a tie vote, there's no action.
Alex?
Uh, I have checked my records, my flight is at noon. And seven hours, yeah, so, disappear for seven and a half hours at noon on, I have to board at 11:30.
Okay. You'll see if you can't sort something out to accommodate this? Great. Fantastic.
I do think on important matters, it's important to have the entire board present, so, um, let's see what we can do there. Okay, so that takes us to the 21st. Charter put, Board Policy Action Plan, uh, board members, as you recall, this is one of our goals that I've set, to have a, a seven-year review plan for policy, I'll have a very specific plan and present that to you at that meeting, and it's under... Indicator 2, Board of Ed Relationship Annual Benchmark Number 2. So, uh, by January 31st, I have to have that done, so you'll be seeing that on the 21st.
Remind us which one that was?
Uh, that is to, um, by January 31st, 2025, Develop Framework to Ensure All District Policies are Reviewed At Least Every Seven Years, and Those Impacting Students Have Supporting Implementation Plan. So, okay, now we're on the 28th, which is a breakfast with legislators and/or night meeting. We could do a couple of things. If we wanna just hold this as a regular business meeting, we can try to find another time for the breakfast with legislators, um, but that would just be another additional meeting. And we've really tried to stay within your meeting dates, um, and, but we could potentially do that, uh, unless, unless there's strong objections, we've already started moving forward to the 28th.
I vote stick with the 28th for the legislator breakfast, and we, we find a way to accommodate the, the Ball-Swan vote.
And just as, just to recall, you know, this is just a touch base, so we can bring all of our legislators in the room, you know, we'll have options for advocating and digging in and meeting with folks throughout the session, I'm sure. So, okay, all right, that takes us to February 11th, where we will present our final declining enrollment dashboards for you all in a work session, then the annual enrollment trends update. And so, and then any study, action, or potential board policies would go here. So on your bingo cards here, the annual enrollment update, which is part of the topics required by policy, and then the declining enrollment dashboards, uh, finalizing those, which is part of what we agreed to previously. Then, on the 18th, is our data deep dive, uh, and topics to come on that will be forthcoming.
Rob, Jason's got a question on that?
Yeah.
I just, I think that's, is that a no-school day, the Monday, Tuesday of that week, no school, so just, I don't know if that's an issue for people that have made travel plans or...
On the 18th?
I think it's the... It looks like it's a, oh, 18th is a Wednesday. Am I looking the wrong? 17th off, but 18th would be a Wednesday.
18th is a Tuesday.
I'm sorry. You're wrong here.
I was actually gonna ask if you were in the wrong year, 'cause that happens to me all the time, where I'm like, and I don't even know how that happens.
Either way, is that Tuesday, no-school day though?
Are we troubled by that?
I won't be in Maui, but I won't be here, so...
You won't be here, okay?
Yeah, but it don't, it's not a...
Do you wanna move that one?
I'm not asking anyone to change it, I just wanted to...
Yeah, so it's a no, it's, it's a workday for staff, it's no school for kids.
But for board members who have kids, they may be...
Right.
Doing fun things. How many of you anticipate not being available for this meeting?
I'm gonna be virtually.
Okay.
In, um, practice is, we tend to not, and Beth knows this well, move board meetings for individual board members. If we do not have a quorum, it's an entirely different thing, but...
Sure.
That's also been our practice, is the expectation is on those Tuesdays, the calendar gets published well in advance, um, if you can't be here, it's not the end of the world, if we don't have a quorum and we have to take action, it's an entirely different problem.
So I saw several people say they could join virtually, you weren't asking to be scheduled, it was just a...
I'm not asking to be scheduled, I just wanted to flag that that is a no-school day, and I know it's set in advance, so, just an FYI.
Sounds like you can carry on with that day, a couple might be virtual, and Jason won't be there. Good? Okay. And what were we doing on that day, just to remind us?
This is one of our data deep dives, where we talk about our UI, progress on our UIP and our strategic plan, um, review and metrics.
Okay.
Okay, alrighty, on the 25th, um, we have our first prioritized item, which was activity fees. It was prioritized on who pays what, who doesn't pay what, just a deep dive into how the fees are impacting potential participation in extracurriculars, co-curriculars, and doing a deep dive into that data and, and talking about the implications it might have for policy and practice. So just, so really board discussion in a work session around that information.
So a question, why, so activity fees is that day, and you're saying, but we have one, two, three, three items above it in, of higher ranking, does that...
Yeah, they're all, they're all in here.
They're coming.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, the way that I built this board, some things are gonna need a lot of time for us to prepare, to talk about what the board wants to. So for example, gifted and talented update has to be later, because I have to bring our team in, kind of figure out what is the practice, get prepared for the presentation. The activity fees is, that's just an analysis of kind of current information, so that's more of a data analysis, that's not an update on practice on where things are. So I didn't put the things that were first, first on the calendar, that's why we do this on a semester basis, because I've gotta give some folks some lead time and leeway to be able to prepare and know where we are, and, and so that's kind of how I've built the board out.
Is that cool? Beth?
No, that totally makes sense. This might be the place for me to get a little clarity on what we mean by gifted and talented update. When I was actually ranking this, I don't, I don't know if I was the one that added this, or Alex added, I don't remember who added this to the list, but, um, I did, okay. So for me...
And I was very smart.
My, my intention was, maybe not the word update, I almost emailed to be like, "I don't know if I like the word update," 'cause that wasn't my intention in putting this on the prioritization list. And I want to, maybe I wanna articulate that a little bit and see if anyone else has that same feeling. I'm not looking so much for an update. I was using this as an item to suggest that we possibly do a deeper review, an audit, put some resources towards diving deeper into this particular part of our organization. And I realize that's a, that's a, an undertaking, and I, I just wanna put it out there that the word update doesn't feel like it accurately captures what I was trying to suggest, that's all.
So before I take more comments, Rob, can you say what you thought that was gonna be, and are you aligned with that?
Well, no, I, I know exactly what Beth was asking for, was an audit, I felt like that the decision to go for an audit, would, you'd need to have an update to know and understand. And I will, I'll remind the board that, was it a year ago, a year and a half ago, the state did an audit, and we did a lot of deep engagement on that. And then I also remind the board that as we think about budget... And then I'll also remind the board that as we think about budget and the ability to do new things and take on new work, that we'll have a pretty clear sense by April on, to the extent of the feasibility of turning any new things on. So I didn't put "audit," because I think the audit, some of that is a management decision to decide to audit, and I think that there'd be more information that you all would want to know to see what would be audited. An overarching audit might not be, it may be, let's look into advanced math pathways, let's look at what are the, maybe it's a middle school program, elementary school program, which might be more feasible. So that's why I rephrased it as update versus audit.
Beth, does that fly? Great. Nicole, you had a thought, and then a couple thoughts over here, Jason, and then Alex.
I was actually gonna say kind of what Rob said, that we did have a really deep audit, there was a lot of public participation, and I know even just from my own students, that they continue to engage the students since that audit on how things can be improved. There is a lot already going on that we haven't necessarily been updated on, and that's why, so I just wanted to bring that, that we had an audit, repeating it now doesn't make a high degree of sense, since those still tend to work through the last one. That was my add.
Jason?
You kind of mentioned it, Rob, at the end, but instead of, you know, an update on kind of where we are, but also maybe an option of best practices around other districts or things that are, we don't need to make decisions, obviously, on what would work, but just so we have a sense of, should we have a budget for something, you know, what are our options, and what can we look at? So if we include that as part of this?
I totally understand, kind of, I believe I understand, and if not, I'll clarify between now and then, but it may be looking for different funding sources if there's such a passion that we want to do something new and different, which potentially would mean going back out to our voters for some type of an opportunity for some, depending upon where the budget, 14, 15 implemented. Like, there's some things, like we get $200 a kid for gifted and talented, you know, we've kind of talked about that, there isn't really much there to do, much beyond what we're already doing. We would have to divert resources from somewhere else or find, or identify new funding sources to do something more comprehensive, and I think that kind of overlaps between budget process, it overlaps between strategic plan, it overlaps between, you know, the programming for gifted and talented students. And so, so I do, I appreciate that, Jason, yes. It's not gonna be, here's what we're doing, it's, you know, here's what the audit said, here's where we've made progress, here's what we're finding, here's how much we're spending, here's what we're getting for what we're spending, and here's how this aligns to strategic plan or not, here's how it lines to the data dive, where we looked at the gifted talented subgroup, you all saw that, we shared with you all where that is. Let's talk about how are the ways that we identify kids for gifted and talented that are different than the same. I think there's some things that we need to dig into, for sure, and at the end of that, we could say, "Look, based on this information, we need to learn more about this, or we have enough information, we want to go forward in this direction."
You got one more thought on that? Alex?
Yeah, I guess I totally support Beth and what she's suggesting in terms of the discussion, I think we're on a pretty similar page on it. I guess I would, I would ask for reframing, perhaps relabeling of this discussion. I've worked a lot in special ed and the school choice world, and people have taught me over the years to not think about it as special education, but services for students with disabilities. And I think gifted and talented is a federal and state program that has all sorts of perverse incentives in it, that leads to $200, which isn't enough to do anything. And meanwhile, we have a tremendous amount of parental and student interest and acceleration of students, and differentiation of instruction of opportunity, and making sure we're addressing opportunity gaps. So I would propose that we not schedule a discussion about gifted and talented at all, and schedule a discussion and an update on what we're doing for students who need acceleration, or that want acceleration, because I think framing it as gifted and talented gets us down to one of the reasons why we tie our hands and then say, "There's nothing else we can do, we only got 200 bucks." Whereas if we have 5% or 10% of our students who need accelerated programming, then we're spending 5% or 10% of all our resources on those students, and a comprehensive review about how we actually serve those students is what we need to have. So I think the gifted and talented thing is kind of a tangent that's actually counterproductive to the real discussion we need to have.
Does that fit into your thinking in some way, shape, or form?
So, this board is in response to what was prioritized, right? It seems like what Alex is proposing is along the same lines, but different in the sense of a focus on acceleration as a strategy, which is a high-yield, high-leverage strategy for students who are gifted and talented, for many of them, for others that are talented in other ways. I mean, if it's the will of the board to change that from a gifted talented update to an acceleration update, I would just need feedback on that, and we can totally do that.
Other thoughts? One option is to let it ride as is and have it be a gateway to sort of level-set what you've already learned and what you know, and then figure out, and now what's missing. So it could be step one, with a subsequent step two coming later. Love to hear folks' preferences. Yeah, Lelandia?
I think it was clear in our data dive on this that we're not doing well, and I think that's the night that you prioritized it. We looked at students with special needs, and that we were doing wonderful compared to other folks around, and we're not doing great for our gifted and talented kids. And I think I lean toward what Alex is saying, because we understand, I guess, maybe I should say, "I understand," that that is a very typical ask for gifted and talented students and their families, is ways to find that next challenging curriculum or pathway. And I know that same brain is doing it, and I worry that we're not being creative enough in how we do it, and so I do think that we need to be looking at it from an acceleration lens.
Okay.
You know, what our math pathways are, or what, I think we are stronger in our math pathways than we used to be, but, you know, we're not gonna get extra money. I'm with you. I know that that's true.
Okay. Looks like just about everyone wants to jump in. Jorge's been real quiet, so I'm gonna let him jump the line, and then we have Nicole and Beth, and Jason, and then Kitty.
Thank you. I appreciate the acceleration conversation, it seems like that's kind of one tool in what we do, but I think as a baseline, I mean, for me, it'd be useful to know kind of what we're doing now and where we stand as a starting off point, which would be this conversation, and then figuring out strategies and, as Jason mentioned, best practices that are being done across our district and other districts as well.
Thanks. Nicole?
So, like Jorge, I was gonna say similarly, I think students that are identified as gifted and twice exceptional, there's a whole host of supports and things that they need, and the experiences that they have outside of acceleration. I think we've done a lot of, had a lot of conversations over the last couple of years. Math pathways was something I prioritized a few years ago, that we've done a lot of work on. So acceleration itself doesn't really get to the crux, the ethos of what I hear from parents with students that are identified as gifted and talented, particularly along ALP development, and whose expectation is it to do some of these things? So it is deeper. I really would like an understanding, because we not, we have not had an update on the audit and what the team has been working toward. I think that is a really good place to start, like Jorge said, and from there, use that as a, okay, and what still needs to be improved on, and for what populations of students, right? The experiences are different for elementary school, they're different for middle school, they're different for high school, and so how are we looking at it holistically before we just, like, jump into acceleration? Because that's enrichment, acceleration, there's lots of things we can do with our gifted kids beyond acceleration, and so I really want, I would like us to take, have a holistic understanding before we double down on one element of that gifted experience. And then I did get asked for a comfort, a comfort break, so after this topic wraps up, Heather and team, if we could have a comfort break.
Yep. Beth?
I always support comfort breaks. I think that this gets to, I think we're having a conversation, I've had a lot of thoughts as we've been talking, I think we're having a conversation about acceleration, yes, but I also think that really at the core of this is really a conversation around differentiated instruction, kind of for all kids. Whatever end of the spectrum you fall on, if you fall on both ends of the spectrum of needs, I think where we're letting students down, whether they be GT-identified or not, is in our ability to differentiate in our instruction. So I guess I would advocate, sure, let's get an update, let's talk about it, but I do think we need to be talking about how are we better serving, to your point, even with the ALP. The ALP should be an opportunity to differentiate instruction. Are we doing that well in any of our schools? I don't know. I would love to know. Where are we doing it well, and then how can we scale that up to other schools? Let's not reinvent the wheel, let's figure out how we differentiate well, and let's do that already. And I think, to Alex's point, we're never, we aren't gonna get more money for kids who are GT-identified, like, that's just not gonna happen. It's not funded, it's not gonna happen. So how do we utilize the resources we already have in a more meaningful, intentional way to support all students, GT-identified or not? So, that's, I guess I agree with all the points, and I don't know where that leaves us with the board, but...
That sounded like yes. Jason?
Yeah, thanks, Beth and Alex. You know, I think these are big, important, kind of philosophical questions that we need to talk through, but in terms of, you know, I think we, you know, we use the term gifted and talented, we label kids that way, the public knows that, I think there's a perception in the public that we are not doing as well as we should be in this area, and so I think relabeling this conversation doesn't help, you know, what our goal is, which is to have a better sense of what these programs do, and let the public know, and let them know that we're working to improve those. And so I think we can have those conversations about differentiated instruction or acceleration as part of that, but in terms of labeling the public-facing, you know, conversation, I think that's important, that we stick to terms that are widely understood and known by the public, and so whether we think differently about what that is, that's a different question, but I think that gifted and talented is a very commonly-known term, and we need to kind of, you know, operate within those, kind of that, you know, those programs or those terms.
Kitty?
So I agree with everything everybody said, but I do want to focus on, and when did they stop calling it "TAG," and change it to GT? Anyway, it doesn't matter. Focus on gifted and talented for the reasons Jason said, and the perception in the community is right. I mean, my 36-year-old did not receive appropriate services for gifted and talented, so given that, I mean, we're not gonna get more money, but we should be able to have something, so when parents say, "What are you doing for gifted and talented, and how are you improving it?" We have an answer for them, and also, if we decide we want to raise money for it through mill levy override, we need to be talking about it and saying specifically what it is, and also the piece about not everybody who's gifted and talented is accelerated, they could be gifted and talented in other ways, and so, you know, acceleration is a piece of it.
Yep, you brought us down this path, you want to bring us home?
Yeah, I don't want to keep anybody from the comfort break. I also agree with everybody, but I agree with Beth the most.
Congratulations.
I, in the long run, I believe we will eventually want to raise money for all our students to fill our opportunity gaps and have, focus on differentiated instruction. My point on the gifted and talented is that it has baggage as well as assets in the community, based on the assumption that it's a viable designation. If you spend $4,000 on the support from the psychologists and the tutoring, you can get it. And then, so that's why I say it's kind of a distraction, and I take, I agree with all the other things, like, we have a neurodiverse community that's usually into this, we have a ton of twice-exceptional kids that may or may not get it, so that's why I'm into the holisticness. So I just reinforce the holistic nature of it, and trying to not have, I don't want to get just a discussion of our gifted and talented programming that's funded with the 200 bucks, because I think that's narrowing, and I'm not familiar with the audit, so I look forward to reading it and seeing the breadth that it has.
Great. Yep, last thought?
I have a couple thoughts, so I apologize. So, it's, this is just a really complicated topic, because I think that, you know, by pushing forward with some of these, it'll butt against some other priorities that we have. I will say that, Lelandia, to your point earlier, I really do, you know, outside of other special populations, the way that we identify tag or gifted and talented students may or may not be the same as other districts, and so I'd want to set that as a standard, right? How, when do you get to open the door to gifted and talented? The higher you raise that door, right, the higher the performance, if it's, if it's performance-based, then I think that I want to be eyes wide open on where we are with this. I would say that when you think about our high school experience for kids, right, that if you were to look at our talented and gifted data for our high school kids, I'm not sure if we looked at that, I think we looked at maybe elementary and middle, I'll have to go back. I think where we prepare kids for in high school, that they have more opportunities than they've ever had in regards to exploring new and different things, and so what we're really talking about is elementary school and middle school, right? And then, as a reminder to new board members, and for those who are on the board, you'll remember this, that we made moves a few years back around math pathways to prevent one school from offering in-person math acceleration and another school not having it at all. That, to the extent that we had these inequitable access to advanced acceleration in mathematics, we tried to lay, to level the playing field, and the feedback that I hear around acceleration is often, "We want an in-person teacher for accelerated math," right? And so that being a very expensive proposition, if you want to do it equitably, right, I think that that's one thing that we would have to consider as a decision point, that if you had just a couple schools that had the in-person, and all the advanced math students were pushed in those directions, what does that do to the rest of the district and to our priorities around access and opportunity and things of that nature? So I do think that there is, there is a consideration there, unless you add these positions or halftime positions to all of our elementary schools, and then in middle school, right, do we begin to say, "This is the advanced math"? I just think that programmatically, the way you slice this and the way that it's equitable versus the service that folks are looking for, and everybody wants it at their school, they wouldn't necessarily say, "That's the right program, put it in those schools." Eyes wide open in regards to some of the competing interests on things we've committed to and potential for that. That being said, I think that with the gifted and talented update, we can address all of these types of issues, we can talk about acceleration, we can talk about what we're doing, you know, what is the criteria, how does it compare to other places, and then we can think about the investments that we're making currently and the progress we've made up to the, up to this date with the audit, and then we can talk about next steps. But I just, I don't want to oversimplify, because I think that the connected pieces to this are really, really complicated, so I just wanted to kind of expectation, set expectations around that for board and community, folks who are watching, who don't want to interpret what I'm saying as, "Oh, on April 22nd, we're gonna figure out how we're gonna get in-person accelerated math back." That is not what we're saying, we're talking about, you know, how all these things interconnect, so I just wanted to not get in the way of a comfort break, but just kind of put that on the table.
Fantastic conversation. Let's take a break. When we come back, we'll jump back to where we were, sort of in March-ish, but go, go, go. Yep, yep. That's something to look forward to. We can't have lunch till you get to June, I'm just saying. Oh, Rob's right there. All right, where are we, darling?
Thanks, everybody. All right, so we started on the 25th, activity fees, data dive, moving to March 11th, calendar policy, cellphone policy implementation. So if we talk about, those are topics previously prioritized for the cellphone policy implementation. Calendar policy is one of our new prioritized items. March 18th, now I've reserved this, in part of our prioritization, we talked about taking two school visits. So one, to a core implementation strategic plan school, and then also visiting Alicia Sanchez to know and understand the UVA work and how that's changed the culture in the building. So I had here, just trying to stay within our footprint of meetings, to use the March 18th day session, do some school visits, if everybody's okay with that. Does that sound okay? Cool.
Mostly thumbs, anyone trouble?
Thing, it'll be great.
Sounds fun.
All right. Moving on to April 8th, you'll see our preliminary budget, our sustainability update, which, this is a two-for-one, because sustainability is one of the things in board policy, but also with a focus on transportation in regards to the topic that came up around electric buses versus diesel buses versus propane buses versus, you know, replacing the fleet and what's the plan and strategy there. So we'll talk about all of that within our sustainability update. April 15th, deep dive, metrics, strategic plan implementation. On the 22nd, I've proposed Title IX athletics. Board members, as you'll recall, you know, we had this conversation recently in our board meeting around, how do we make sure that we have equitable budgeting between schools and between sports, and no one understands that around Title IX? We would do that on the 22nd. Gifted, talented, acceleration, differentiated instruction, all the things we just talked about, update, and then a DEI equity update as well on the 22nd. On the 13th, we'd start talking about my evaluation... On the 13th, we'd start talking about my evaluation. I've, I mushed a couple of topics together around OG schools and micro school and potentially acceleration schools into a conversation on how to, on, whether it's a policy conversation or a practice conversation around, "How do we identify and build out special programs at special cool schools, which we call focus schools?". On the 13th, provided all goes well with, with Renee Crown Wellness Institute, a well-being action plan based on the results of that, a CIBAC bond update that I think needs to be in person. So that's a lot of stuff that we could check off. Topics previously prioritized, Renee Crown. And then GT update, Title IX, focus school programming.
Robbie, you have anything for a couple of questions?
Yes.
Alex and Lelania? Jason, sorry.
I actually had this question when I was filling out the survey. What are we looking at with the DEI update? What should we expect and what are we going to be?
Update on, we, we will have an update from Flo, who you all have, has not had a chance to present to the board, around all the work in regards to equity, all of the training we've been doing, kind of the progress to date in regards to equity and diversity equity inclusion in the district.
Lelania?
Focus school programming, if I remember, or I guess one of the things I'm connecting that to is our enrollment. And I'm thinking about, could we see that more adjacent to, my eyes are not that good, Rob. I think our enrollment is way further back there in the semester.
So that would be in February, our declining enrollment dashboards.
And the reason I, I would want it near that is I like for my brain to be thinking about those two things together. And I also see that calendar policy, we will all already have approved calendar, and it's a while in the future before we get calendar back to us. That's our, our value, our defining values or whatever it was, right? What's the name?
Guiding principles.
Guiding principles. So I'm wondering if focus schools could come closer, if anybody doesn't object to that, to declining enrollment because all of that seems to go together for me, for my brain, a little bit more.
So move calendar further out.
Just switch those two because calendar is already, we've already had to approve whatever we're doing. And then that's something that we don't see anything for another two years, so.
Anyone troubled by that? Thumbs up. Rob, are you cool with that swap?
Yeah, no, I think, I think that those things will work. We'll probably have, just have a little bit more conversation on this focus school, kind of what are we doing, right? Because to your extent, it is related to declining enrollment and it also is related to budget and it's also related to programming. It's also related to, you know, focusing and supporting special populations of students where you'd have programming that may not meet the entire population, but sub-populations, which is an underlying theme of a lot of the things we're talking about. So if everybody's good with it, I can flip those around and in, in five seconds.
Couple more thoughts, Nicole and then Kitty?
No, one question I had with the calendar policy is, you know, I was looking at all of our, like, school policies. A lot of the updates to the calendar policy includes instructional minutes and a lot of clarity around what that means. That dovetails with an MOU, so I would, just want to make sure we're timing our calendar policy. Maybe it works better to have it a little bit later, but making sure that we do have an MOU around instructional minutes as well. And so I just wanted to be mindful of what comes first and how that time, timing works out. So I think it's fine if it's later, but I just wanted to make that, as we're talking about things that are similar.
So the review of the MOUs is going, coming kind of towards the end of the semester to give us more time to make more progress. So, so what you're saying I'm hearing, Nicole, is that we don't want to wait too long to start to talk about calendar policy because if there is an implication on requirements for instructional minutes per credit. But I would say either way, like whether it is in March or in May, well.
I'm glad to retract if that, I didn't, I did not think of how that was doing that.
Rob, while you're thinking, we have a couple folks that want to jump in. Nicole, finish your thought and then Kitty.
I was going to say, I don't, I'm not saying I am sure on what the best, what comes first and how the timing is. I just want our board to be really clear that that, they will, they do intersect. And I would leave it to maybe Rob to say, "What is better? To have the policy come ahead of, during those discussions or after?" Or I just wanted to make it clear that that is for the board, something that most districts have incorporated in that same calendar, that same policy title, is instructional minutes and along with calendar.
Kitty and then Jason?
What is an OG school? Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I thought it was original gangster because I'm from Denver, but I see that y'all are past that. Jason?
I didn't have, it was more of a thumbs up to Nicole's suggestion.
Okay, cool. Lelania? What are you thinking?
I just realized, I didn't realize instructional minutes was in there too. So I think it's super important that we defer to Rob.
Here's, I have a proposal. We could switch activity fees in focus schools. If we wanted to move this to, to the same month, and then you could, you put activity fees to May, if everybody's okay with that?
Anyone troubled? Thumbs up? Lelania, you don't love that?
How is that working with our policy work?
I mean, pushing back activity fees?
Uh huh. I think that the policy work has to follow the deep dive, right? So where's the deep dive? The 25th of February?
And, and we haven't set out the whole policy schedule. I mean, these are the trade-offs, right? We could jump focus schools earlier to have that more or we could.
Retract my.
Never mind. Cool, all right.
The art of, and exercise of trade-offs and balancing, you know, and thinking through.
But this is a great conversation because the sequencing of things matters, but we're going with never mind on that suggestion. Okay, all right. Carry on.
All righty.
Hold on, Rob?
This is more just a comment. I'm fine with the schedule and the DEI update being later. I know it's the first year and giving time to kind of really get a sense of the ground. But I, I know that there's an underlying sense of unease in our Latino community right now and our immigrant community. And there's a lot of concern about, you know, safety in schools and having their kids be accessible and family members who come to pick up their kids. And so I'd like to kind of find an opportunity earlier in the year, right, to reestablish our values about what we do as a school district, how we provide a safe environment and what is or is not allowable in terms of enforcement for things like immigration and customer enforcement. Because I know that's, that's a serious issue. And, and I think that the diversity, equity, inclusion stuff, that's, that's everywhere, right? So we'll talk about it in the strategic, strategic plan and the metrics. And we'll talk about it in terms of access and gifted and talented. But I just want to raise that issue if we can find ways to kind of reinforce the values of our community and what we're doing actively to make sure that people feel safe and that we're engaged with that community.
I was reminded recently by a former board president of a resolution that was passed by our board and reinforcing and stating our values and what we believe and what's allowable and what isn't. If the board would be interested in, consider a resolution to pass and doing that prior to potentially January, we can work on that if you all would be interested in that.
Alex?
Yeah, thank you, Jorge. I'm in absolute agreement and on the urgency of keeping that front of mind. And I would just, and I don't remember the resolution that the previous board did, but I would just add that the anxiety is equally urgent amongst our LGBTQ community and our trans community in particular. So great timing, great importance, great reminder. Thank you, Jorge.
Jason?
I agree with all that. I was just wondering if there's a way to move that up. I mean, we're meeting as a board next week and I feel like it would be, you know, appropriate to have some kind of statement, I don't know, resolution, but something coming from this board to the various communities or folks in our community who are concerned about, you know, the direction of the country.
Beth, did you want to say something? Okay, all right.
I just agree. And I've also heard from a variety of community members in the LGBTQ community feeling a lot of trepidation and concerns around safety specifically in light of recent events.
What do you think, Rob, timing-wise?
So you're saying next week?
That was a suggestion. Is it doable? That seems like a fast turnaround to write a quality resolution.
I mean, it's doable to talk about it. If we want to, if we want to reserve an item around, we could, we could talk about this as a board publicly and then follow it up with a resolution that you'd study and then action, and then action. So we could do that during legislative priorities or we could do understudy item, you know, proposed resolution. I, I mean, we, we could. Yep, I'd be hard-pressed to, to turn staff around in a week to write a resolution. But I think that we can begin to talk about it. I mean, we're talking about it right now, so.
So talk about it at the next meeting, Jason, go ahead.
Is there a way that we could kind of maybe, I mean, just the way we started this meeting with reinforcing our vision and our, you know, that was really useful. So I, you know, we hear that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to, you know, every meeting, but I think reinforcing that at some point, next meeting, if that's possible, with a, with a promise of some kind of action later. I don't know what that looks like, but if there's a way to structure that into our meeting where we, you know, even, it's nothing new, we're not taking action, but just as a reminder to students, to our community, that this is what we stand for. It's always what we stood, have stood for.
Nicole's got an idea and then Lelania?
So what I would propose is that during our legislative update, I can read the resolution from 2016 as a reminder to our community. And the board can then, later on in the evening, I mean, somebody, we can prioritize or during agenda setting, or we could move the idea of having a, an updated resolution to that similar resolution. So I could read the old ones already, so where it was from the last time DJT was elected and as a grounding, and then we can move to have an update in, at a future board meeting.
Lelania?
And I also think if Rob and your superintendent's comments, if you could express how the board has come forward to you and said this is a priority, I think that makes a difference. Just saying, you know, lots of people are not watching this meeting because lots of people aren't watching this meeting. And some people are going to watch it later today on replay and fast-forward us. But I do think that if, if we're saying it aloud and saying it has come to you, I think that's also important.
Absolutely. And we, and we can prepare that for study or, or direct action on December 10th, right? Like, to the extent that we get the feedback that we would need. Why don't we?
Couple more thoughts while you're noodle on that. Kitty and then Alex?
I was just going to suggest if we're going to bring up the topic of the 2016 resolution, perhaps we could also add to that. And I don't remember what year it was, but we adopted a resolution congratulating ourselves on having adopted a resolution on trans students and staff. 10 years before that, we were the first in the country.
We highlighted that last year, but I think it wouldn't hurt to highlight again.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean.
Alex?
I just wanted to let the record stand how grateful I am for the previous board's forward-thinking leadership on this stuff. And it's great that we can continue long tradition. So I, I think one of the messages is just reinforcing how much this is, these are the values of our community.
Love it.
Yeah, and it's because they're the values of our community.
So Rob, where do we land? We're going to?
Well, into our November 19th agenda, Laura, a study item to, you know, resolution, work with Kathleen on the title, and then we'll bring that to action December 10th. And then, and then then we'll have that solidify. Okay.
Thanks for.
Jorge, thanks for bringing that up. I think that was really meaningful.
Okay, all right. So back to May 13th, my superintendent evaluation process starts, the focus schools, well-being, CIBAC. May 20th, so we want to reserve this, not this day per se, but this time slot for our meeting with Boulder City Council. That is something that we've prioritized. And Laura's got a few dates that she'll float out to you all. We're thinking a couple of hours. And so not the 20th per se, but we have a few dates. But Tuesdays are not going to work for Boulder City Council. So these are mostly Wednesdays and that gives us a few months to know and plan on what that might look like.
Beth?
Thank you for reading that for me because I can't read it from here. And I was wondering what was May 20th? A question that comes to my mind is, we've, we've a couple times done our prioritization meetings before, like right there at the end of the school year. Mid-June is three weeks after the school year is wrapped. Would it be possible to plan to do prioritization May 20th and possibly even combine it? Because May 20th, I assume is a Tuesday. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but, so I guess we couldn't combine it with the Boulder City Council. But if we're kind of holding that day, it has nothing on it. I'm, I'm wondering if we can do our prioritization then, before we're out of school and it's three weeks post-school and our brains are in summer mode. Just a thought, question.
Nicole?
One thing I would encourage the board to remember is that none of our policy calendar items are on this board. And so we will have, in some of these blanks, we will have policy coming to us to, and usually we have two to three iterations, right, of those. And so the blanks, actually, I think, make me feel better because I know we have a lot of policies coming that are TBD. And one thing I do like about having the June 17th prioritization or having it later is that it's better, I appreciate having that work later than actual work of the board when our families are really disengaged. I always feel like it's a little bit disingenuous to have really meaty topics after school lets out. So I, I would reserve earlier in the year for meaty topics and later in the year when nobody's paying attention to the things that really don't impact them in a great way.
Alex?
Yeah, and I'm, I think I'm leading, I agree with Nicole on that one. And I also would defer to Rob because it seems like the staff are putting in a bunch of time. And so if they're going through the end of the school year stuff, then maybe the June 17th gives a chance to finish up all the other priorities. But that's.
Oh, there you go. I want to frame up June for you all. Most likely, we will be wrestling with incredibly difficult budget decisions, right? Like, so, like, we probably are going to have to have this June 24th meeting. I would guess. I would guess. So to the extent that, to me, whether you do it in May or June, I think a lot happens between May 20th and June 17th, within that month, around budget and knowing and understanding what's happening. So I think that the prioritization on the 17th makes sense. And, and the 20th, to the extent that we reserve that for some other topics or whatever, to Nicole's point, we could. But right now, the date that we would have for the Boulder City Council right now is May 21st. And we just picked one, but we can give you several Wednesdays to choose from. The problem will be that it'll work for some, not for others. So if you're good with the 21st or if you'd want to open it up, I'd love that feedback. Either way, we won't schedule anything for that date. We need it or, or we don't.
Do you want that date preference now on the 21st?
Well, I, well, whether that date works for people or they want us to look for another date. Remember, it's two hours and I'm not sure the time of day we'd be meeting with Boulder City Council, I think evening. But I could also let Laura talk about it because she's been doing, trying to do the planning on this.
Laura?
I've talked to Megan from the city. She works with Carl. And they proposed four dates, likely 5:30 to 7:30. The dates are Wednesday, April 9th, Wednesday, April 23rd, Wednesday, May 7th, and Wednesday, May 21st. And I kind of pared back the April 9th and 23rd because I think those fell right after our regular board meetings that were at night, thinking that board members may not want to be away from families twice at night in one week. April 9th, April 23rd, May 7th, and May 21st. They asked if we could send them two dates.
Okay. Anyone have a burning, burning desire for one or the other or against one or the other? Easy peasy?
I appreciate Laura's consideration of having missing two nights in a row. So I, when they. they, whatever the weeks are, I can't see them all, but I, it'd be great to stagger it on another week besides a week we're having a board meeting, an evening board meeting.
And I was just going to say, a lot of us have kids, so June doesn't feel appealing because we, that's like summer break.
So one of, one of the other, the May dates then would be best? 7 and 21?
So it's May 7 and May 21?
As options, and then council will come back to you and?
Yep.
Good old Megs. 5:30 to 7:30.
So the 21st of May might be Boulder City Council, and the 20th of May is on hold for policy work?
On hold, yep, it's a.
That would be a day session, though.
It'd be, it's a day session potentially on hold. Okay, um, are we good to keep going?
Are we good? Beth, are you good to move on?
May 27th, community use of schools, review of MOUs, and an overview of digital literacy, and your proposed budget for study. June 10th, superintendent's honor role, budget. June 17th, prioritization. June 24th, reserved if budget goes sideways, and so, somebody go ahead and yell it out. Bingo, if you've been checking along on your bingo card, that's everything on the list.
But wait, we have questions and comments, Jason.
Yes.
I hate to go back to this, but just looking at the calendar, going back to the city council, the 21st is, I think it's the night before the last day of school, which, as a, as a parent of three kids in school, that's not ideal, just as far as that, I don't want to resketch.
So we're thinking May 7th?
But you need to propose two dates.
Tell them both, but with a preference for the 7th.
The last, the last one.
21st. The 9th was April.
Yeah, sure.
The April dates would both be after a board meeting that is at night, so you would have two nighttime days away.
Which isn't ideal, but they're better than the last week of school, so.
So you prefer, you, you prefer an April, one of the April dates to the 21st of May?
Just speaking for myself, I think the night before the last day of school is tough, but if that's, if that works for everyone else, we can make it work.
Okay. Lelania, you agree? So April, one of the April dates and then May 7th, as going, as preferences for council? Anyone troubled by that?
I would just really emphasize the May 7th preference, I think they are also eager to meet with us, and so we can say, May 7th really is what's going to work for the board majority.
Okay, so I will prioritize these, May 7th, with the April dates as being a second choice, and May 21st is the third, last resort.
Yeah.
I really guessed that one wrong.
I'm sorry to interrupt, the bingo game, Rob.
That's right.
Go back to bingo.
Okay. Alex, are you on bingo?
I'm on bingo, but it's a, it's an additional, like I want to add an extra square. When do we deal with, like, the Boulder Prep renewal? And if we've adopted new policies to have annual reports from our char, about our charter schools, when would we receive or get an update on those annual reports? Those are two things that are now, like, I know Boulder Prep is pending, and we delayed it in order to have a substantive review of it, and we've updated our policy now to have annual reports on the progress of our charter schools, which is great to make real as we have a new charter proposal before us.
Are those things in there somewhere, or those would be new items to prioritize, Rob?
Well, if they're board, if they're in board policy, i- in the board policy, does it say public presentation or just a update through executive summary? I'd have to take a look, if it's in policy, we will figure out a way to put it in, and I'll update the board once I've checked with Kathleen and Bianca.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, but the, the Boulder Prep renewal will be a real thing, even, I think we can't take care of that with an executive summary report, and it would probably be a multi-stage process if we're doing best practices in it.
So expect that to be feathered in the bigger part, in ways that are responsive and appropriate.
Great, responsive and appropriate, that's the best. Fantastic, so double bingo on that one. All right, anybody else have questions, concerns, things that you didn't check off on your list, or you lost sight of where they landed? Rob? Yep?
I made a couple of adjustments to this prioritization, I would love a little bit of real-time feedback, did it work, was it helpful, was it clear? It, it left for conversation, it prioritized, does this work for everybody if we keep doing it this way? Thumbs up, thumbs down, sideways, speaking out, or?
All the way up.
Okay, all right, well, hopefully you found this to be productive, I think we were pretty efficient with our time and didn't sacrifice any conversation or discussion, so, very good.
And, Rob, just to be the voice in the room, y'all can do all that work, staff? Okay, just double check.
I, I would, if, if I felt like we were overstretched, or if I didn't have enough time, I'll share that with you clearly, right? Like I did, as some of you were talking about moving things, I, I, you know, I'm very thoughtful as, as we do this, and no one understand that we need some time, so, yep, I feel good.
Fantastic. Last call for last thoughts, Kitty and then?
We'll get the updated spreadsheet.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nicole?
No, I was just going to say, and it's probably evident, given that we've been through one work of this prioritization, but because something lands in a calendar in a semester doesn't mean it necessarily wraps up with a bow in a semester, we still have a whole host of policies that we prioritized last semester, we have yet to see, those will roll over to the following semester, I would anticipate, there are some things that just take longer than a semester, and I, I just wanted to elevate that, that cadence is sometimes out of our control, and this budget is going to create a lot of havoc in ways that it's really hard to anticipate, so stay tuned for that.
So much fun in the months ahead for all of you. I was telling a couple of you at the break, I never realized what a half-assed parent I am until I sit here with you all and like, just your commitment to your students and responsiveness to parents, I'm like, I, I should be making more noise. Thank you for your thoughtful conversation, thank you for caring so much about your community and your kiddos, and we'll break here, and last call for last thoughts, Alex.
I'm sorry, I have, are we going to, do we have more time to continue to raise a couple other issues, because I just wanted to raise the CASB session.
Mm-hmm, yeah, sure.
I had communication with folks at CDE who have sessions on the CASB agenda coming up in December, and I was talking about our, our deep dives into the data, and they were excited to hear about it. So we have an invitation to participate in one of the sessions at CASB if we wanted to share our thoughts on having that sort of adoption of policy, something to share with other boards. We talked before about inseminating it, I just wanted to bring it back and say if people thought that was an opportunity to follow up on, and if it is, then I can connect Rob and we can figure out next steps.
My one hesitancy is the timeline, and does the staff that might be there, which really is typically just Kathleen or Rob, have the time to put together something that's thoughtful and appropriate for, for that?
I, I definitely think it's worth an exploratory conversation to, to see what the session would be, because I think what it would, what Alex is proposing would be a session that's already being led, and it would just be kind of a, kind of sharing how we have, how, how we have, have married our strategic plan, our governance model, our ability to look at data in a way that helps drive decisions and improve outcomes for kids. That's correct, and I would just add that it's been put together by Dan Jorgensen and Aaron Lofton, and they were, it's also part of sort of their governance strand, and so they were hoping that a board member or two could participate, and it would be pitched as, as like a piece of a session, they're already prepping, so not much work, and a description of exactly what Rob's talking about. I, I, I would love to have another board member and Rob as well, or his designee, because I know Rob has multiple other sessions that he's involved in. No, I would, I would definitely do this, and I do, for, for the, for the good of school boards across the state, seeing how folks can work together in ways that are productive, and, you know, I'm, I'm thinking back to a session I went to with Nicole and Beth when they joined the board around the ways in which they suggested boards and superintendents work together, and I think that we have a model that folks should know about, that you, it's not about always just staying in your lane, and you can't say this and I can't do that, that there's other ways that you can come to the table around conversation, around common agreements, around wanting what's best for your kids and community, and work together in a model that's clear, that's transparent, and I think is proving to really work, given the results we're getting in our district.
I wanted to try and put in a proposal for almost that exact topic, but we missed the boat with CASB, and actually NASB as well, apparently their proposals will do like mid, early August, so that's surprising, for a conference that's in April, but yeah, I would love to join you if possible, or I'd fully support it.
Can I, can, would somebody be willing, and it's probably Laura, but maybe Nicole and Rob, tell us about what, I did see the evenings, what we're planning to do at CASB, but then I also get all of the other emails from CASB, and I was just wondering if somebody could enlighten me, last year was like a blur to me, and I just want to make sure that if we're all supposed to be at any particular cocktail party or anything like that, that I'm clear on where we should be.
Laura, we'll send out, I have sent out our dinner reservations that we have, those CASB cocktail receptions are up to your discretion to attend, the delegate will not be, typically cannot attend all of those because of delegate assembly, so it's partly due to what is your role on the board and what other conflicts, but those are welcome to, for anybody to attend, and there's no obligation to attend, but at your will. I typically add those to my calendar as I see those, just so I'm aware, and then attend or don't attend depending on what else is going on. And Laura, can, I mean, as, we'll continue to send reminders about the things that we have planned as a board.
Alex, when is that presentation that you're, just so I can look at the agenda?
Let me follow up with my email, I, I think I have the time, but let me look at my email, I'll get back to you right after.
Thanks. Okay, I'm handing this back to you now, you're officially in charge.
Thank you for our, our second highly productive board prioritization meeting, board members, Heather, for joining us, and with that, our meeting is adjourned.